All right. Welcome, everybody, to the January 25th, 2023 City of Edina Planning Commission Meeting. On behalf of the Planning Commission, we are grateful that you're here tonight, those in person, those tuning in remotely, or those watching later. Your curiosity and participation and feedback is vital to this process as we navigate change here in Edina, specific to the context of what people want to do with their land. So, the city is committed to continuing to receive and hear your input on matters. We've been collecting public input through voicemail and our engagement website, bettertogetheredina.org. It's important you know that all comments that have been submitted have been received and reviewed prior to tonight's meeting. You do not need to submit the same feedback in another way. All feedback is considered equally, regardless of the way in which it was submitted. So, tonight, there are two public hearings. Individuals who'd like to provide testimony remotely for the public hearings can call the following number: (786) 496-5601, and enter conference PIN 5620740. That'll get you into the meeting. When we get to the public hearings and it's your -- and you would like to speak, press *1 on your keypad, and you'll get in the queue to speak. An operator will introduce you when it's your turn. Please state your full name and address before speaking. Everyone's allowed up to three minutes to speak. Lauren Sebanaler, Senior Communications Coordinator, will let anyone who calls in know if they've gone over the three minutes. Remember, you do not need to call in or comment live tonight if you've already provided feedback. Also, do not repeat information already presented. Provide testimony if you have new comments or information to bring forward. And with that, we will get on with our agenda. First order of business is we'll call this meeting to order, and we'll do roll call.
Commissioner Miranda.
Here.
Commissioner Alkire.
Here.
Commissioner Hugh. Commissioner Gandhi.
Here.
Commissioner Olson.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Strauss.
Here.
Chair Bennett.
Here. All right. Next order of business is the approval of the meeting agenda. Assuming everyone's had a chance to review the agenda, I'll welcome a motion.
Move to approve the meeting agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, moved. Next order of business is approval of the meeting minutes from the prior meeting on January 11th. First, does anyone have any comments they'd like to -- or any opportunity to, I guess, revise the minutes, or are we good? Thumbs up, good? Welcome a motion.
Motion to approve the January 11th meeting minutes.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So, moved. All right. Next order of business is our community comment. During community comment, the board will -- we will invite residents to share relevant issues or concerns. We will -- anyone who is in person can speak about something not on tonight's agenda or scheduled for a future public hearing. You may speak similarly for three minutes. After giving your full name and address, the green light at your podium will turn on. When you have 30 seconds remaining, the yellow light will turn on, and when you're out of time, the red light will turn on, and I'll let you know. Please stop. If anyone here is here for a community comment, please come up to the podium. Seeing none, we will move on to our public hearing. So, our first public hearing tonight is for 5200 Gorgas Avenue, and it's a variance request. For those tuning in and here, quick context of our public hearing. It'll begin with a presentation given by staff. It'll come back to the Planning Commission for questions. Next, the applicant will have a chance to provide a presentation similarly. The Planning Commission will field questions. Then we will open it up for the public hearing, where it is your chance to speak about the matter. Then we'll close public hearing, and it'll come back to the Planning Commission to deliberate and make a decision on. So with that, welcome Planner Akker to the podium to provide a presentation for us. Thank you. Never mind.
We just have to get the computer back up. There's the document cameras on right now, so.
If anyone has Jeopardy music, welcome you to play that.
Can you hear me? Is this loud enough? Okay. Chair, members of the Planning Commission, the request is for a 10-foot front yard and 11.4-foot rear yard setback variance for a tear-down rebuild at property located at 5200 Gorgas Avenue. The subject property fronts West 52nd Street and is located here. Currently, there's a rambler on the property. This is a photograph of the home that's on the property, and this is an existing home survey. The home, at some point in time, was fronting Gorgas. There's this area here that had been right-of-way, and that's why it's -- the address is at 5200 Gorgas, because at some point in time, the front yard was actually the east part of the lot, facing a right-of-way area to the east, and then the rear yard was to the west, side street along the north lot line, along West 52nd Street, and then the interior side yard was to the south. Now, however, that -- this area that had been right-of-way has been vacated. It has become part of the lot, or a portion of it has become part of the lot. So, the only street frontage it has is along West 52nd Street. So, by default, that becomes their front yard. According to the definitions in the ordinance, the front yard is that area that is along the street frontage, and then the opposite lot line is the rear lot line. So then, the east and west lot lines become the interior side yards. That makes this lot a very shallow lot for development. What they'd like to do is to replace the existing home with a two-story home. It will not have a basement. This is a proposed survey for the home, and the area that I highlighted in yellow is actually showing the buildable area of the lot, given the required 30-foot front yard setback and 20-foot -- 25-foot rear yard setback. So, that will give an indication that the lot, as we apply the ordinance to it, is unbuildable without the benefit of variances. So, in terms of a compliance table, it does meet all of the other ordinance requirements, with the exception of the front and rear yard setback. Interestingly enough, however, if there were frontage along Gorgas to the east, it would meet the ordinance requirements, and there would be no variances needed, because it would maintain the minimum side street setback for the garage opening of 20 feet, 10-foot south interior side yard setback, the east side front yard setback would be 30 feet, and then the rear yard west -- or, oh, actually, I take that back. Then it would require a setback variance from the 25-foot rear yard, but it would virtually match all of the other ordinance requirements. So, here is the new home, first floor in context on the lot, and then there's an existing home that is directly to the west. That is also the side wall of their garage rear yard here. So, the distance between the side wall of the proposed subject property's garage and the existing home to the west is quite deep. There's quite a bit of space in between the two. Here are -- here's the main level plan, and then the upper level plan, and again, there's no basement planned for the property. North elevation, which is fronting along West 52nd Street, south elevation, which is considered the backyard, and then both the east and west elevations, it's a rather long, narrow house on a very shallow lot. So, these are, in contrast, the existing setbacks, the proposed setbacks. The existing house is non-conforming in terms of setback from the north and south lot lines. It's much closer for both, and then the new home that's being proposed will maintain a greater distance from both the south and north lot line. And here's the home that you would see in context from different views. So, the proposed new home, will it meet the criteria for approval of variances? Staff believes that is the case. The proposed use is permitted in the R1 single-dwelling unit district and complies with zoning standards, with the exception of the setback of the north and south, and that is by virtue of the fact that it's a very shallow lot depth, considering now the front yard is along West 52nd Street. The variance allows the new home to maintain comfortable distances from both the north and south lot lines and are at a greater distance than the typical interior side street setback, and also greater than what the existing house is currently. The proposed home fits the character of the neighborhood in height, scale, and mass. The home is appropriate in size and scale for the lot, and the improvements will enhance the property. The new home could be taller from the existing grade and cover more property area than the design is reflecting. Currently, the lot shares boundaries with the property in common ownership to the south. The owner that owns that property also owns this property, and that shared ownership allows this home to be built for extended family members to live in this house proximate to the owner of the adjacent property. So, staff recommends approval of the variance is requested, subject to the findings listed in the staff report, and also should be developed in conformance with the survey date stamp December 23rd, 2023, building plans and elevations date stamp December 23rd, 2023, and compliance with conditions listed in the Environmental Engineers Memo dated January 18th, 2023, and compliance with the tree ordinance that was adopted January 1st, 2023. I will stand for any questions, and also Andy Campbell, the architect, is here for any questions, and Andrew Arthur, the property owner. With that, I will answer any questions you may have.
Open it up to the Planning Commission. Commissioner Strauss.
Yeah, Planner Akker, the fact that this is -- does not have a basement, we used to hear these, and that didn't seem to be an issue for consideration. Did we change our -- okay, so that did happen. I should know that, but -- because I remember, we used to get those very projects without basements for our consideration, and I know that.
Yes.
So, there was a result of that.
We did change the ordinance, so you don't -- you're not hearing that variance.
That's right. No, okay, good. Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Miranda.
So, if I understand the layout of the lot, it looks like the surrounding lots are basically twice the size of this lot, and the two end lots are like one lot cut in half?
Yeah. The ones along Halifax are almost double-deep, and this lot is just sort of the back of one of the lots.
Okay.
And it fronted the right-of-way for Gorgas, and it was the only house that has that address, and now there is no Gorgas right-of-way and still has that address.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Open it up to the applicant. So, Andrew Arthur and Kristi, and/or Andy Campbell. If you guys would like to make a presentation or stand for questions, we'd welcome you to do so. Thank you.
Kristi did a great -- the project, so I'll try not to reiterate anything she said, but I will just kind of point out, one of the unique and rewarding parts of the project is that the applicant does live in the lot to the -- in the house to the south that shares a boundary with this property, and that the desire is for the applicant's parents to live in the new home here, which I think is a unique kind of multi-generational living accommodation, but that we also took care to design this house so that it would fit for anybody who might live in this home in the future. So, we designed this to be as narrow as possible so that we could increase the setback off of the rear property line, so that somebody in this home would have as much of a usable rear yard as possible and a decent degree of privacy to the yard to the south. And I think the applicant is here as well, if you have any questions, or if you have any questions for me, available too.
Open it up to questions from the commission. Commissioner Strauss.
Yeah, not a question, just a comment. This is to the applicant and your team. Planner Akker, you know, mentioned the fact that this proposed house could have been higher and also a greater lot coverage, and I -- that's two things I noticed that -- and it's obvious, looking at it, that you're going to have to like what is being proposed versus what was there. I mean, it's certainly very -- and but the fact that this could have been oversized and overcrowded, my compliments. I think you pulled it off, and I think it's going to be a wonderful addition to that neighborhood. No, I mean, I think you pulled in all the -- just the right factors, so thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Alkire.
Thanks for coming tonight. This doesn't have anything to do particularly with the variance, but just for my information, if you don't mind. We don't see a lot of projects without basements, so I'm just curious how that came to be and what your -- you know, what the motivation for doing it that way is.
Yeah, hi. So, I'm Andrew Arthur. I live, of course, next door, as it's been pointed out, and I'm the one who owns the property, going to be building it for my parents to live there. And so, part of it was the elevation and the floodplain issue that's in the neighborhood, and I think there was -- Andy could comment on that a little bit better, but there was going to be some complications with building a basement due to floodplain designation. And ultimately, with the lot or the square footage of house that we had, we really didn't need a basement for additional square footage, and for the cost of building and making it a more practical home, we felt that the elimination of the basement was actually an easy decision for us. But it started with the floodplain designation that inhibited our ability to build a basement.
Any other questions? I have one question. It has no bearing on, you know, my feeling toward this and where I'm sensing approval coming, but based off of your situation, keeping in mind living in place and it being a place for your folks, I didn't notice, since it is two levels, if there is anything figured out for like future space vertically for like a lift or getting someone upstairs with assistance without major modifications.
Right. No, that's a great question. We are like pretty limited by the lot coverage, you know, that we're allowed here, and in order to get, you know, main level, one level living and getting a, you know, a primary bedroom suite and living spaces and laundry and everything on the main level, it's a little tight, but I do think the one place that we had considered in the future one could go is kind of taking a corner of the garage.
Yeah.
To connect the two levels would work fairly easily and kind of just take a little bit of space out of one of the stalls.
Okay. Yeah, no, I was curious. I didn't see it, but just I assume that was thought out just because of the context here, but definitely important. So, commend the creativity and the multi-generational living. So, with that, we thank you for your presentation, and we will open it to a public hearing.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, before we open it online, we will open our public hearing to those who are here in person, so we will now hear from residents who are here and would like to speak about this matter. You have three minutes, as stated before. You can come up to the podium. When the light turns yellow, you have 30 seconds left. When it turns red, your time's up. Is anyone here to speak about this public hearing? Seeing none, we will turn it to our remote situation. So, Lauren, are there anyone -- is there anyone tuned in?
I do not see anyone at this time, but I would recommend waiting one minute. Do the broadcast delay, just to make sure nobody joins us.
Okay, thanks. So again, if you called in before or after the initial memo, please call (786) 496-5601 and enter conference PIN 5620740 to join the conference room. Then press *7 to speak. Is that it, Lauren? *7? All right.
I believe it is *.
Do we have a motion to close the public hearing? *1.
*1.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So, moved. The public hearing's been closed. So now, we will take it back to the Planning Commission to comment and discuss. Open it to the fellow planning commissioners to opine.
I'll start us off. Planner Akker's chart showing the buildable area on the site is pretty decisive to me. I mean, it's clear that you can't build a house on this lot. The design is beautiful. It looks like a surely a building I'd like to live in, so well done to the applicant and owner, and I'm going to support this.
Any other commissioners? Welcome a motion.
May I make a motion to approve the variance request based on the findings and conditions as listed in the staff report.
Second.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Congratulations. Good luck with your project.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have another public hearing. So, this one is a zoning ordinance amendment, and it's specific to multifamily housing in the city's commercial zoning district as it relates to affordable housing. Today, we, I guess, it's just for discussion, so no presentation. Is there anything you guys would like to comment on with?
Yes. Yeah, I'll tee it up.
Okay.
So, back in December of last year, well, a month ago, the city council, HRA Housing and Redevelopment Authority, updated the city's affordable housing policy. Within the zoning ordinance, that policy has been codified for multifamily housing in the planned commercial district. We did that a couple of, maybe two, three years ago. So, the ordinance that's in front of the commission this evening is to amend the ordinance so it's consistent with the affordable housing policy. So, it's for those projects that come in within that zoning district, as an example, Southdale, where multifamily housing is allowed on that property, so it's the way to ensure that affordable housing occurs on those sites. So, some of the notable changes include an increase to the buy-in fee. That is up to, it's now $175,000. And also, there's some specifics added in regards to density requirements when affordable housing has to be provided within the project. So, a couple of measuring sticks for a mixed-use project where there's housing and commercial or office, if it's -- if the density is 50% of what's allowed by the comprehensive plan or greater, affordable housing units have to be provided within the project for a standalone just residential project. If they are 75% to 100% of, again, what the comprehensive plan allows for density, the affordable housing units need to be included in the project. Ultimately, it's the city's council's decision when they're taking final action, but those are the two notable changes to the policy. We have Stephanie Hawkinson, our affordable housing manager, with us to answer any questions you may have, but the recommendation is that the Planning Commission recommend that the city council approve the ordinance so we're consistent with the affordable housing policy. And with that, we'll turn it back to the commission for discussion or questions.
Thank you. Stephanie, do you have anything to add at this point that you'd like to add before we grill you?
No, I am only here for questions.
Okay. I guess I'll turn it over to the Planning Commission. Any questions or comments or discussion points? Yeah. Commissioner Strauss.
I'm not sure who to answer. The change in the buy-in amount or the payout or whatever the term was, it's increased to 175. How was that number, I mean, the new amount to buy out of the units needed to provide? Is it?
Chair commissioners, we did a -- we conducted an analysis a year ago regarding what the income loss is to a developer by including the affordable units in their development. We took a market rate example that included affordable housing, and we looked at the losses from market rate to the affordable level over the term of the affordability, and we realized that the income loss is roughly $325,000 when you include an affordable housing unit. So, we had a buy-in of 125. It was becoming an easier and easier decision as construction costs were increasing to opt for buy-in rather than
Stephanie, do you have anything to add at this point that you'd like to add before we grill you?
No, I'm only here for questions.
Okay. I guess I'll turn it over to the planning commission. Any questions or comments or discussion points? Yeah, Commissioner Strauss.
I'm not sure who to answer. The, the change in the buy-in amount or the payout or whatever the term was, it, it's increased to 175. How was that number? I mean, the, the new amount to buy out of the units needed to provide, is it?
Chair Commissioners, we did a, we conducted an analysis a year ago regarding what the income loss is to a developer by including the affordable units in their development. We took a market rate example that included affordable housing and we looked at the losses from market rate to the affordable level over the term of the affordability. And we realized that the income loss is roughly $325,000 when you include an affordable housing unit. So we had a buy-in of 125. It was becoming an easier and easier decision as construction costs were increasing to opt for buy-in rather than to include. However, we also looked at what other communities across the country were doing with their buy-in fee, and there aren't a lot, quite honestly. And to try to figure out, we don't know exactly what the sweet spot is, but we were trying to look at like communities and what they were charging as a buy-in. So between the cost to the developer for including the affordable unit, plus what we're seeing in comparable communities, 175 seemed to be a good number to aim for. Truthfully, we don't know the exact sweet spot. I don't know if any community knows the exact sweet spot for what a buy-in is to equalize the decision between buying in versus including.
Great question, great answer.
Yeah, no, thank you.
And I, where I was probably going with it is that, is that oftentimes we do face these like conditions and we don't know exactly what. Sometimes it's all new territory. And I think this, this is a good example of the system kind of working. Let's do it, work with it, you know, when we have more, you know, information, more data, then, you know, revise it. And I think that's a, it's an example of kind of a flexibility where, no, this isn't how it has to be. You know, we'll, we'll make, we'll make changes as necessary. And that was, that was a good, that was a good development for that. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Strauss. Commissioner Olson.
Thank you. My question is about some of the larger apartment buildings that have been built. I'm a, I'm a renter myself. So I'm thinking, how would something like this apply to like the Bower that went up recently or the new Lifetime Tower? I'm all in for the affordable housing. I think it's incredibly expensive to rent in Edina. And so how would, I'm trying to contextualize like how that might apply to a development like that, which is primarily luxury and their large developments.
Do you want to take that carry? Sure. So the Bower is at the, the top end of the density range. So that provision that says they need to provide the units within the structure, that's kind of the starting point. But the council ultimately has the decision, so they could make the, so they could have said, you need to provide the units within the building or do the buy-in of 175 in this, in this case with the change. So this gives us a little more teeth to require the units in the building.
Thank you. That answers my question. I like that provision because I think it's too easy to do the buy-in and then you're separating affordability and your, your neighborhoods become, the economic disparity between the neighborhoods just gets wider. So I like this, what's going on.
Commissioner Alkner.
Thank you. But just to clarify, the, the council in the future can still decide otherwise. I mean, they can still decide to allow a developer to use the buy-in or buy-out program, whatever we're calling it.
They could.
But it would be harder.
It would be harder, especially for a project, let's say, Southdale. Any, any housing project on Southdale. So that, that property is zone planned commercial district. So they wouldn't need a rezoning. So that's where this ordinance would kick in. And the fact that it's written in the ordinance, yeah, that we might have to grant a variance to that provision in order to not require the units to be built in the project.
Okay. And then one other question. I don't know how far back in history this question goes, but do you know why these, some of these PCD areas? Take Southdale for example. Why they were, why they're commercial with conditional use as housing rather than commercial or residential by right?
Yeah, that ordinance goes back to the housing that was built at 50th and France. That was when the ordinance changed to allow multifamily housing within commercial zoning districts. So code was changed at that time and it was decided that it would be by a conditional use permit. So it's probably, it's been 20 years or so.
So is, is it fair to say it's a conditional use rather than a by right use just so the city makes discreet decisions site by site as to whether we want to extend housing in that area? Because if it was by right, the developer could do it without a variance.
Yeah, so it's an allowed use. So it's, sometimes it can get tricky to say no to a conditional use. But we could, the city can place conditions such as requiring affordable housing.
Oh, I see what you mean. Okay, I got it. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Quincy. Thank you. I was really trying to wrap my head around this one. I just have a few questions. Hopefully I won't take up too much time. But question one, does this policy affect only go-forward developers? Or is like, could you go back to developers who've already, already developed and enforced this policy?
Yeah, only going forward.
Okay. Next question. I see that, you know, in the staff report, there's like a two-tiered system. And in there, there's a line that says must include affordable units within the development. I guess if it's like over 50% of the maximum density, you must include it. Does that mean that 10% of the units must be affordable? Or could you choose some number, some number less than 10%?
It would have to at least be 10%.
Okay. Next question. The mixed use development, the cut point was like 50% or greater. And then the residential development was 75% or greater. How do you determine that 50 and 75? Like, how was that decided?
It's, it's a way to encourage mixed use development. As you know, sometimes we struggle with that. So it's a providing an incentive for a truly mixed use development within the same building is, is part of the thinking. If you're going to do just a standalone residential only, we would rather see the units in the building unless Stephanie has anything else to add.
Okay. Last question. It was mentioned something called a density bonus. I was trying to think through that. Could someone explain density bonus?
Yeah, I can take a stab at it. It's, it's really to get to the greater end of the density range that's allowed. So it, it's an exchange in theory that you get to do more units, but you have to provide affordable housing. You know, if you're on the lower end, you could do the buy-in. Extra incentive to provide the units within the building.
Can I add?
Sure.
Chair Commissioners, in some communities, and I haven't quite figured out how they do this. They'll say that the density is, for example, 50 units per acre. But they'll allow more than 50 units per acre if they include affordable units. And so they have written their zoning in such a way that allows them to do that. Our zoning is not written that way. Our guided land use in the comp plan may say 50 to 100 units. And so developers have been coming in wanting to build 100 units per acre. And then going after them and saying, well, if you're going to reach that maximum, you have to include affordability. It was a softer touch what we had, and this is to try to codify it a little bit better.
Any other questions or comments? Commissioners? Commissioner Miranda?
Yeah, going off of Commissioner Olson's comment about economic inequality, it seems like, I'm glad we're increasing the buy-in fee. When I first heard about it, it seemed so expensive. And then I realize now that it's not very expensive at all. And it would seem that the more, the, the higher end, the housing that, that's being built, the easier it is to, you know, do these fees. Is there any way to control for that? I mean, I know like when we evaluate projects, we're not supposed to care about whether they're super high-end or not or what the size of the thing is as long as they meet minimums and stuff. But, you know, is there any way the city can like encourage, you know, more higher-end systems to also include this kind of housing?
Commissioners, it's a tricky question in part because inclusionary housing policies and inclusionary zoning policies work best in strong housing markets. And housing markets that are not strong, even having these policies is challenging. And often they don't work. So we are, we are able to do anything in part because we have a strong housing market. And then there's, you know, the economics of it. We were, in the beginning, some of the projects were able to include the affordable units with no additional financing from the city because the economics were such that the, the delta between the market rate and the affordable was such that they could absorb the affordable units and still get the return on their investments that were industry standards that would allow them to attract investors. We're in a tough economic situation right now somewhat. You know, with the supply chain, construction costs, labor markets, et cetera, that I, I don't know when we're going to be visiting those other times again. So really dictating to developers what they do and what kind of buildings they build, I think is just going, is just challenging. I think it's integrating ourselves very much in market forces.
Okay, thanks. I'll ask the question again when there's better times.
I, I would add that in part, this ordinance is trying to address that issue. You know, we're putting it in writing. If you're on the high end of that density range, we want you to put the units in the building despite the economics of it. The Bower is a good example of that.
Any other questions? Commissioner Smith.
I have a comment. I don't know if it's comment time.
Yeah.
Anything? Okay. Comments?
Sure.
So I have a written statement. I tried to put my head around it to touch on this, to try to really frame it. So I'll just read it off and hopefully it would spur some thinking and, and we could have like a good, more vibrant conversation. So, so our goal is to look out for the long-term growth of the city and meet our city priorities, spell out in the comp plan, recent equity plan, et cetera. The question I try to understand is what would change in the city with this new policy? Right? So if we make this change, what's going to be different? So it's a very complex idea and a complex system. So the way how I break this down, I try to think about, how could I look at this from a very simple perspective? And then start building on the layers from there. So a couple of things, and I think you touched on this a little bit, is the environment. So across the country, rental rates have been increasing, pricing many renters out of this market. The issue has been especially acute with low-income renters. So that's one. The cost to build is going up due to supply chain issues with, you know, COVID and the war and all this kind of stuff. So the cost for building is going up. And with inflation, you know, mortgage rates have been also increasing to stem off inflation. So you have these environmental forces kind of putting pressure on the rental market. The next phase really is like the stakeholder incentive, right? So who are the key players in this environment that we got to think about? Of course, the city of Edina is a key player, right? Our incentive is to try to increase the amount of affordable housing in the city. You know, so that's our goal. We're trying to push that objective. The banks, the mortgage banks is a, are the key player in this equation. Their goal, of course, is to provide financing to credit-worthy borrowers and developers to collect, you know, their mortgage rates, you know, equivalent to their risk profile, right? So if you're a high-risk developer, you're probably going to have a high mortgage rate. And then finally, developers, right? Their goal is to increase their cash flows. Ideally having cash flows equivalent to what it is today or higher. You know, and higher cash flows would be good incentive for a bank to lower mortgage rates. So as a developer, my goal is to try to have cash flow. Okay? So if that's like the three, you know, competing forces, I'm thinking about what is the business model? Like, what are the levers that could be pulled to make this change? So then, again, with the city of Edina, we have a few levers. The key one being discussed today is the total buy-in, right? And increasing that buy-in from 125 to 175, like a 40% increase as a way to drive our incentive of creating more affordable housing units in the city. So that's what we could play with. I'm sure there's other things that we could play with to help drive incentive, like maybe taking on some risks for financing for developers. If they really want to build, we could do tip financing. Who knows, right? There could be a whole host of things that we could do. Banks, of course, wants to provide financing to borrowers with good credit and low risk. So they look at the stream of cash flows from a new development. How could I, you know, give you really good credit rates? You have to prove to me you have, you have really good cash flow. And that's the key. Developers, their model really is a cash flow model, right? So it's rent and you subtract from rent expenses, which could be like taxes, insurance, maintenance. And then the mortgage, which is a principal interest escrow, all kind of bundled together. In this case, you could break the rent down into two parts. The rent could be regular rent, like what a regular, non-low-income person would pay. And you have low-income rent, which if they have 10% of their units as low-income housing, they are kind of capped at a certain rent level. And so that's kind of what they're looking at. Now, in the ordinance, I did see that doesn't matter if you're a regular renter or a, a low-income renter, you have access to the same amenities. You come in through the same door. You could access the pool, access everything. It's going to be no different. So the per-unit expenses is probably going to be the same for a low-income renter versus a regular renter. Let's just say the mortgage rates are the same. So if I assume mortgage rates stay the same and the expenses stay the same, then what am I looking at is how could I adjust my rent to improve or maintain my cash flow? Okay? In either scenario, if you have 10% low-income housing, a capped rent, or you do buy-in, that cost gets offset by the regular renters. So regular renters' rent is going to increase in either option. So you mentioned that rent is really high. If you don't fall into that low-income bucket, your rent would go up with a new developer. Doesn't matter which one. I think you kind of mentioned the long-term cost of developer by including low-income renters, 25,000 or so. That has to get offset by the rent increase by everybody else in the building. So that's one. Rent is going to go up, which is fine. And I'll come to the conclusion here in a, in a second. The next assumption is developers would then take strategies to try to reduce, I think, the operational expenses. And one way that you could do that is by having a bunch of units. So Southdale is a good example. The per-unit operational expense is going to go down the more units you have because of the efficiencies of that, right? And so that's one way that they could reduce operational expenses. The other way you could reduce amenities. You might take away the pool or you might take away the concierory service that is a cost to the building. So you might take away some of those amenities. See, the way how I see it is developers would lean towards building more units in high-density areas is kind of the impact that I see. So two scenarios, and I'll let the rest of the team kind of think through it a little bit more. But one is you'll probably see more high-end development that would be many units in a high-density area being built. And you're going to see the rent increase to offset the 10% of units that have to be affordable housing. You probably see that. The next tier is going to be not high-density, but lower-density housing in a lower-density area, so like a smaller building. But you're going to see them probably select the buy-in option and then really have high rental rates. So you see super luxurious, smaller buildings, slightly less luxurious, bigger buildings is what I think the impact is going to be to the city. But again, it's a very complex equation, right? And I think you asked the question, what's the sweet spot? I think the sweet spot is going to depend on how much this really good market is. Because Edina is a very good market for building. How much is this market willing to absorb higher rent? If it could absorb higher rent, then you'll see more developers leaning into having more of their units, 10% or so, being affordable. So that's kind of my thoughts on it. I was really trying to break this down and build it back up. I was really trying to break this down and build it back up, but that's kind of the impact that I see to the city with this ordinance. And, you know, I'm willing to try it, see how it goes, and we adjust and make a decision on in the future if it adds more affordable housing units or not, but that's kind of how I see the breakdown. So that's it for me, Jeremy.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Olson.
My comment is, you know, obviously, we want all the city ordinances to be in alignment so that the process of dealing with the city is easier. My comment is, in some of these higher-density areas, I just know where I live, I walk my dog in the morning, and I see 25 to 30 people every morning schlepping from the transit in the Southdale area, in their boots, getting to their jobs, and I'm assuming it's, you know, Target, the food industry workers, and it would be really great if an ordinance like this could allow those people to live where they work. And I think that's where something like this comes into play. And I wonder if you could clarify, this is just for educating me, affordable doesn't necessarily mean low-income, correct? Isn't affordable, it's just a percentage? That it's not necessarily low-income people, it's lower-income people? Could you educate me on that one? I appreciate it.
Another tough question. Affordable is income-based. It is generally looked at at 30% of area median income, 50% of area median income, and 60% of area median income. And it's for the county. It's determined by the federal government. They look at all incomes in the area, and then they pick the median. And as some incomes are rising high, those are also factored in when coming up with these calculations. So I would say for a lot of people, even affordable rents in new buildings are challenging for a lot of folks. For the 50% area median income, it's $1,100 for a one-bedroom unit. And I would say some people would find that to be hard to pay.
Thank you. Just to build on to that, great question, because I feel like anytime we talk about, you know, these analyses, just in general, the context is important. So when people hear AMI, it's just foreign to them and what that means. So if anyone's listening, or people here, if you just Google Met Council AMI, there's a great just landing page that explains this all, and you will find like affordable, like Stephanie mentioned, just isn't as affordable as you'd think. And at least our benefit is, you know, they show the 80% AMI. So you take these incomes, and then, you know, there's one for ownership and rental. And so it's basically if you, as a family, are at this income, this is what you could probably afford. And that's like the tabular breakdown, but the 80% AMI is capped at the U.S. National, which is lower than the Twin Cities area. So what we see for the 80% is quite a bit lower. And I noticed in this proposed ordinance, I think there was something added or modified for 85% AMI? Was that at some point, or 80%? And could you speak to the context of that?
Commissioners, that's for ownership housing?
For ownership housing?
So affordability for rental is typically the 30, 50, 60. It's based on other sources of funding, namely, it's just a standard that folks use in affordable rental housing. For ownership, it would be 80%.
So 80, not 80? Is it 80 in there, or 85?
It's 80.
It is 80, okay. Just wanted to clarify. But yeah, I found that helpful, and I feel like most times we talk about this, people have perceptions of what affordable is, and even for homes, it's not as affordable as you would think. So 80% is a home, affordable home at 355. Then for 1650, you go down to 276 and 227. And so part of the discussion, too, is have we considered, you know, pushing more on one lever of, you know, it's 10% for 50% AMI, but you also have the choice of, or 20% at 60% AMI? And if we learned anything about, we'd rather encourage more of a middle ground, or less of a more helpful ground? Because that isn't changing in proportion here. And has there been any, like, analysis or feedback we've learned over the years of, you know, is there a preference there, or should, you know, should we just stick to trying to enforce one over the other? Just curious.
Yeah, I think we probably see more of the 10%, but on occasion, we've had developers do the 20% at 60. Well, the one I think of is the 70, the first approval of the 7200, 7250. They chose the 20%. Of course, that project didn't happen, but I think we see the 10% probably more often than the 20.
And so I guess is there specific feedback also from the development community of, you know, obviously, there's certain preferences, but, I mean, if we're seeing it mostly the 10%, I would assume that's an easier grab, right? I mean, if that's what they're doing. So would it make sense to modify the other number if we wanted to see a little more? Or like, is there a sweet spot there, or do we still feel good about the 10, 20, or is it 10 and 15? Or, just curious, because if we're talking about this, I think it's important to understand the context.
Yeah, it might be something you could recommend the council consider. You know, they've approved the policy, but it might give them some food for thought for the future to think about that either-or, or do we want to lean more toward the 20 at 60%? I guess that'd be my recommendation, is if you have some thoughts in that regard, let them know.
Okay. That's all I have for question slash comment questions. Does anyone else have any more questions based off of some of this discussion? Okay, if not, this is a public hearing, so we will move to the public hearing portion of the agenda. I don't see anyone here tonight minus staff, so I think we can forego that portion of it and move to the remote waiting room. Is there anyone in queue to speak?
We do have a caller on the line, but they have not indicated that they would like to speak, so I suggest we give them one minute to select star one. I will start the timer now, and just a reminder to the caller to state their full name and address before speaking, and I will let them know when their three minutes is up.
Thank you.
I would add, while we're waiting, that this has been posted on Better Together,
According to my watch, it's been one minute. I believe it is safe to proceed.
Thank you. I would welcome a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing?
Second?
All in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
So moved. So we will, not so moved, but it's closed. Anyways, we will bring it back to the planning commission for discussion and additional comments, and ultimately hope to have a motion to recommend to the city council here. Open it to planning commissioners for additional comments.
Commissioner Smith?
This was maybe a question that I missed, but assuming that this gets approved, is there a metric or a goal that we're seeking to see, so like after one year or two years, here's the additional number of affordable housing we'll see before we revisit the ordinance to see what adjustments we could make? I don't know, that's more of a question, I guess, but what's the process after to improve on the ordinance if it's not working, I'd be intended?
Chair Commissioners, myself, other staff, the Adina Housing Foundation, we all are, we consider this to be a live document. We are constantly adjusting, tweaking, to try to make it to be responsive to the market, to the conditions. We look at what's being, one reason the buy-in was jumped to this level, too, is because we noticed that we are leaning more towards buying in than including, so needing to make adjustments, well, yes. And recommendations are always welcome.
I just a comment on that, too. It feels like historically, at least while I've served on the planning commission, too, and maybe it's different by, you know, the different council members we have in office right now, but it seems like there has been a history of even favoring the support of the buy-in on the council side to be more proactive with, you know, using those monies to then focus on full affordable housing opportunities in targeted locations. So I just, I'm curious, too, are we doing this? Because there's been kind of new tailwind in the direction of like, if you were to choose, let's have it on that site versus let's get the money and find a way to be more efficient with it on a different site. Does that make sense? Yeah?
The city council approved the Metropolitan Council's recommended goal of creating 1,804 additional affordable units by 2030, as memorialized in the comprehensive plan. It's more efficient to create affordable housing in multifamily developments. We have been using the buy-in funds for single-family ownership-type programs, which are also a highly desirable goal of the city, but you, we're not going to reach our goal of 1804 through single-family ownership. And so it is, it's a balancing act. I mean, the funds are a very flexible use of funds that we're able to do creative projects for which there isn't another source of funding, where with multifamily rental, there are other sources of funding that we combine ours with that to be able to help do multifamily. So it's a constant juggling and balancing act.
See, I mean, there's the affordable project at 70th and Cahill, and the other one near South Hill, and it seems like historically, you know, there's momentum to try to concentrate those. And I feel like this is kind of in opposition of that, just of like, we're trying to favor getting those units in that development that's being proposed. And I think the commission probably has favored that more, just holistically, too. Just curious if there is any feedback, and maybe it's something we can table to a work session with the council. You know, are we doing this? What, you know, to Commissioner Smith's point, is like, what is the goal here, and what's the metric? Because there are the other methods to, you know, get more affordable housing. Is this, this is kind of our goal? I just haven't heard the council kind of opine specifically on these options versus using the HRA as a different hat that they wear to get other affordable housing in a different way.
Just, can I, I want to get a clarification on what you just said, to make sure I'm tracking. Are you saying you think the commission and/or the council are favoring the buy-in, or favoring units in the building?
I'm just saying, historically, what we've seen is more goes to the buy-in, but I felt like as a commission, we favored the recommendation in the sketch plan review and others to get it in the project.
Yeah.
But then ultimately, it gets approved to go the buy-in route.
Right.
And the HRA, which the city council has used those monies to concentrate. So I just want to be a little more clear on like, what is the, you know, is every project so unique that we just kind of don't have it figured out until it's proposed, and then that's when the decision's made? Or, you know, do we want to be proactive as a city, as, you know, we want you to come in here with expectation that we want those units on-site, and we don't want the buy-in? Because that seems like why we're raising it here, to steer away from the buy-in, right? I mean, it seems logical why, or maybe I'm missing something.
No, I think you're absolutely right. But to me, to build on that.
Yeah.
You just have to follow the money, and to what Ms. Hawkinson said at the beginning, the numbers, the numbers for the developer favor the buy-in, by not a thin margin either. I mean, it's pretty consequential difference between the two. So I feel like we, as a group, have been, like you said, unanimous in preferring the units. I know Ms. Hawkinson, I think it's fair to say, we've talked about this before, you prefer to have the units rather than the dollars.
I can't feign to speak for the council, and I'm not going to, but I think one of the goals is us to be, offer options, and to be flexible, and to be a desirable city for, to do development.
Yeah. And I suppose, I mean, the win-win here is, if you still do the buy-in, there's now more money in the bucket. And that's, we're ultimately trying to get more money in the bucket, or more people in affordable, or relatively affordable, houses. But that's just always something, I felt like there's a tension, and, you know, we're kind of persuaded one way, and then it goes another way, so it's just helpful to understand more of the context. Commissioner Smith? Sorry?
Go ahead. Go next.
Yeah, you know, just to kind of add on to that, I'm just wondering, you know, one other option, of course, is to eliminate the buy-in completely, right? I know that was looked at, I think, in 2018 or so, or some group proposed to do that. So that's an option, but we're not taking that option, right? And I'm wondering if it's because it's still very attractive for us to get the money to use in more creative ways? Like, that attractiveness of doing that is really strong. And of course, yes, we want to be flexible to some degree, but if we don't do that, then the next time we probably meet, it's probably going to increase the buy-in higher and higher and higher, till it's so high that a developer looks at it and says, I'm just going to build these units, these affordable units, and I'll do the buy-in option. So I feel like we're going to get there eventually to eliminate the buy-in completely, but in the interim, we just keep raising the buy-in amount until we get there. That's kind of how it feels to some degree, but I don't know what you guys think about that.
I can build on that a little bit. I mean, the, I can see that playing out, and then I can also see at some point in that escalation process, the developer saying, you know, I think I'm going to go work in Bloomington, just because the economics are going to be better for me there. At some point, that's bound to happen. I mean, I don't know at what point that's going to happen, but at some point in that escalation process, it's going to happen. And I guess just to make a more general comment, I mean, our affordable housing development manager has probably the hardest job in the city, and one of the things I admire about what Stephanie does and her team is that every year, I don't know what the number is, there's a dozen new things that we try as a city, and not all of them work, and some of them need to be changed the next year or the year after that, and some of them probably have been tried and scrapped, and we move on to something else. But I really admire that we keep trying new things, and that's why I'm supportive of this, is because it's not necessarily going to survive in its current form forever, or for a year or two years. If it doesn't work, we'll try something different. And we just have to keep trying everything to get this job done. So thanks for all your work.
Other comment, yeah. Commissioner Miranda?
Yeah, so this is, kind of brings up the location of affordable housing, which is a diagram, a map of the city, rather, on page 18 of the policy proposed amendment documents. And on the one hand, it's really good to see that there's, you know, affordable housing kind of in every quadrant of the city. It does seem, when you look at the Come Home to Adina, which I assume is the single-family home, yeah, is, you know, that, none of that's really in internal neighborhoods, it's always kind of, you know, near a busy road, busy road or highway or something. It's always kind of, you know, near a busy, busy road or highway or something. And the thing about us as a city having such large minimum lot sizes is that, you know, affordable, single-family homes is hard, really hard to do here, just because of the cost of land and the size of our, of our properties. So on the one hand, getting money from developers, you know, through a fee to help single-family homeownership affordability, you know, might seem like a good idea. It's just that it, it takes a lot of money to make a single-family home affordable. So, but that was my main point, just that, you know, the, it's, it's good that it's spread throughout the, every quadrant of the city. It's good that we have multiple places for it. But I think, you know, building the units, like what we've been trying to do, is, is really kind of the solution that we, we need to go for. And if anything, you know, this Come Home to Adina or, or something like it, you know, maybe we split those lots and make duplexes out of them or something to make those, you know, even more affordable. Because I think it's, it's, you know, with land prices. I mean, our house, you know, is worth zero. It's like, you, you buy our house for the property. And so, you know, one way to deal with that is, is, is either changing minimum lot size or allowing it for affordability. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? I think that was a great discussion. I, there's a lot of solutions. And I guess like Commissioner Alkire said, we're, we're trying stuff constantly. And so this seems like a change in, in the right direction to, to kind of bring either more money to the city, to get creative with it, or to steer, to steer affordable housing to happen in these projects. And I guess one other obvious point to that that I see is, you know, anywhere that we have a commercial district is a pretty convenient place to have a relatively affordable place to live, because you're closer to transit, you're closer to services. So I think that just keeps going to our point of it's better to build it into these projects because they're already in a great location. These aren't happening in the middle of neighborhoods. So I think it's a step in the right direction, whether it works or not. I think we might see residual effects of, like, the rent goes up for everyone else to offset it, and maybe there's bad effects from that. We don't know. But I'd, I'd welcome a motion from a fellow commissioner, or if there's proposed modifications to what's on the table here that are worth discussing now before a motion, or conditions to the motion as drafted in the staff report, now would be the time.
I just have one clarifying question, actually.
Sure.
I did, because I think this is good, and I love the conversation, and I think the try something and see how it works is perfect. What is the role of the compliance officer? And did the compliance officer, was that, is that a new role today? Or, and is, is that also part of the ordinance? I'm just kind of curious on their role and, and what will they do going forward?
Yes, thank you. We have a contract with Affordable Housing Connections. And so they meet every year and they're on call with the property, the market rate developments that have affordable units included in them, to confirm and verify that the rents are indeed affordable for the 20-year period and that the people that are occupying the affordable units are income-qualified. Our objective is to make sure that the housing is affordable for those tables and that they're serving the people that need to be served. And so it's someone to go in there, look at the files and check to make sure that i's are dotted, t's are crossed. We believe that it's happening, but we want to make sure. We have found out that there is one building that was not complying, and we therefore decided we needed to put this in our policy and our ordinance to highlight that we're serious. We want this to happen, and we want it to happen for the time stated and the rents agreed upon.
Yeah, I think that's, that's really good. And that compliance officer will be our measurement system, or part of the measurement system. Because if we're going to check and adjust, right, we're going to hopefully approve, deploy, it goes out, someone has to make sure that they're checking these locations to see, are we making good on our promise or not? And I think that's why I was really leaning into that, because we need to have that person be part of that system to ensure that these units are being affordable and continue to be affordable over the 20-year period or however long we're going to measure it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, yeah. Commissioner Olson.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Before we go to a roll call vote, are there any proposed modifications or discussion? Seeing none, let's move to a roll call vote.
Commissioner Miranda?
Aye.
Commissioner Alkire?
Aye.
Commissioner Olson?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Strauss?
Aye.
Chair Bennett?
Aye. Motion carries. I guess we didn't need to do that, but thank you. All right. Exciting. So that has been recommended to the city council for approval. And we'll look to staff to keep us updated on the progress and the outcome of that. And assuming that the, the council's listening to this, or we can just put a note with that, I think it'd be helpful if at some point during future work sessions, it's a discussion point of kind of seeking out what the goals are of the council, just so we at least can try to be a little more in concert with that or understand their goals and outcomes. Okay. Moving on. Chair and member comments. I want to, to any commissioners who have anything they'd like to say. Yeah, Commissioner Alkire.
I thought I'd just give an update on Cahill, since I haven't talked about that much lately. We had our, I've got some notes here, so I'm just going to run through them to try to stay efficient. We had our 11th meeting on Monday of this week. It's the 13th event, if you count the two community workshops that we had as part of the process. We kicked this off in November of 2021, so we're, we're into our second year. The expectation is that we'll be finished in April-ish timeframe and have a presentation to the city council sometime around then. It's not scheduled yet, but we're on track, I think, to, to be finishing up with, with the finished product in April. I want to make sure commissioners know that we have our third community workshop on February 21st. So that is the day before our second February Planning Commission meeting, so that's a Tuesday. It's expected to be 7:30 till 9:00, but I don't know if we've nailed down that time.
Seven to nine.
Seven to nine. Oh, so we got extra 30 minutes. So it'll be seven to nine on the 21st. The agenda, we talked, we talked about the, the meeting plan on Monday. Generally, we want to share some land use scenarios with the community and get their feedback on them. That'll be an important, that'll be the last community workshop that we have as part of the process. So coming up, we've got Janet King, who is part of the consultant team, is working with Addison and some, and Chris, if she's still here, there, there you are, my manager, to have a developer panel, a real estate panel. We'll be having those on January 31st and February 7th. The idea, idea there is to see how the building developing community is thinking about opportunities in the district to get, to get their thoughts firsthand. So that's January 31st and February 7th. Also, on February 7th, we'll be participating in a city council work session before their council meeting on that day. Basically, want to just do a trial run with them of our work so far, just to get their sense of our progress and to see if they have any ideas on things that we should be doing before we get to the finish line, so we know that before we get to the finish line. So we'll talk to them about the process, give them an overview of the draft results as they exist on that day, just to get their thoughts and see how they're thinking about the process. Some of the key things I thought, themes I thought I would just share from you from our work. The first is the challenge of creating public realm and public amenities in, in a district where there really is very little, if any, public land. So that's kind of a, one of the difficult things that we've been facing as a team. Second would be how much housing do we want to allow in the district and where? The push and pull is we want to preserve the industrial core and the industrial function and the tax base of the commercial and industrial parts of the district. And, and yet there is an opportunity for a certain amount of residential in the district. So how much and where is a key question for us. We have a number of working group members who are concerned about growth generally. So that's something that we, we spend rather a lot of time talking about. And third, how to deal with flooding and stormwater challenges to unlock potential value in the district. It's a very serious concern, particularly in the northeast part of the Cahill District, where Nine Mile Creek runs through, and there's a lot of blacktop in the district. So where does all the water go and how do we potentially try to mitigate some of that in the future so that more, that more of the land has higher use and higher value? So that's a tricky part that we're trying to address as a team. So it's a quick summary. Any questions, please let me know. And I, I'll send out, I'll send Carrie a meeting notice to forward to everybody else for the meeting on the 21st. Is that all right? Okay.
Thank you. Any other comments, commissioners?
I had one more.
Yep.
Okay, forgot to mention this before. I want to recommend an article from the Sunday Times Business Section. It's called "America the Bland." Some of you may have seen it. It's a full-page article about, in the business section, about, it's generally about the five-over-one building style that we find everywhere in the universe right now, and some of the good points and the bad points about it. And it'd be interesting to see what the, it'd be interesting thing to discuss if we ever had time at a work session, just to see how our group feels about that. But I'd recommend that to you. Once again, "America the Bland," Sunday New York Times Business Section. Thanks. Commissioner Miranda?
Yeah, I have two comments, and the second one requires showing photographs. So I'm going to run to the podium. So my first comment is, has no, has no, has no.
Please state your full name and address.
I just want to put a good word in for Morningside After Dark, which is going to be this Monday, January 30th at 7:30 PM at the Morningside Church. It's a big thing in our community and, okay, it's a big thing in our community, and we invite everybody coming in. It's hosted by Adina resident Rebecca Sorensen. You'll laugh, you'll cry, there's entertainment, there's music. It's, it's a wonderful evening. So I highly recommend it. It's been going on for years. And the second thing is that I want to thank the city council for listening to neighbors in the Morningside neighborhood who requested, there were several petitions for putting in more sidewalks in our neighborhood, and the city council agreed with that. And I just wanted to, to show an example of, all right, can we go? So many people and things are using the sidewalks, including the turkeys in the area. So you can see that we have a, a large turkey population. And so I was walking to the grocery today and, and I saw the turkeys there. And the thing is, we have the, a big bunch of them in, in Morningside. And so they actually walk down people's driveways, and then you can see they actually use the infrastructure. They walk on the sidewalk, they don't walk on the street. So anyway, thank you, city council. We have a great neighborhood here. Thank you.
That's awesome. Any other comments? Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, a couple of comments, just one comment and a book recommendation. So I know earlier today, you've seen on your screens now, we had to decide and, and approve the Gorgeous Avenue variance. And I'm just wondering to myself, like, if we had an ADU ordinance, what would be different with this owner's building decisions, right? Part of an ADU is to help, you know, one option, you could build something for parents to live in. And they clearly purchased this property and are building this home for their parents. So I'm just thinking, there might be some more opportunities like that throughout the city that hopefully if we get the ADU ordinance put in place, we might see more encouragement for folks to do that. So that's, that's just a thought in my head as the speaker was speaking. I, we don't have the ordinance, but if we had one, it would be interesting to see how that would change things. This other one was, was a book that I'm reading by Thomas Friedman. It's, it's called "Tanky for Being Late: Thriving in the Age of Acceleration." As you guys know, Thomas Friedman is a New York Times columnist, journalist. He grew up in St. Louis Park, Minnesota here, and he wrote a really, lots of books, but his last one was really interesting, where he talks about, you know, the trifecta, which is, you know, the technology accelerations that we live in right now, climate change, and also globalization, and how those three forces are coming together and changing how we, how we interact in the world. And I think the question that I think about is, you know, how can we build a community that would prepare itself for the future? And I think, Jimmy, when you opened a meeting this morning, you use the word navigate change, right? How do we help the city navigate change, change in this environment of globalization, climate change, and technology speed, right? And I think it not only impacts, you know, residents, but aspects of their lives, like as a city government, how could we work in a way that could help folks in the city adjust to change more easily, whatever that is that we decide to put in place? How do we help them do that? The processes need to change how we make people adapt to change quickly. Schools, how we teach our children now, pretty soon, no one's going to be writing, they're going to be typing. I'm sure there's a lot of things that we could do in Adina Public School System, which I'm, I know that they're looking into and they're working on, to prepare kids for this future that's really fast. Healthcare, certainly, one of them as well. And then, you know, from an economic perspective, jobs, right? People are saying machines are going to take over your jobs. Not necessarily. Machines are going to augment your job to some degree, but how do you prepare yourself for a, a new way of working, you know, working from home, working on Zoom calls, working with technology in just different ways? So it's just a thought experiment for this planning commission to think about. The future is rapidly changing. The way how we do things might have to be adjusted slightly to help residents adjust to that fast-paced world. So that's just a thought that I wanted to share.
Thank you. Maybe we only got a couple commissioners ago. We good on comments? All right. I'll turn over to staff for comments.
Yeah, a couple things. First, just an update from the council. So I think this might, yeah, this would go back to a decision that you all made in December, the bank that was going to replace the building on stilts, and the recommendation was for denial. The applicant decided not to move forward. They withdrew their requests, and so they won't be building on that site. Yeah, so they withdrew. The, the second item is the 2023 work plan. So I included it in the packet. What we'd like to do is tee up a work session for February, February 22nd, to discuss the work plan status report and moving forward. So you'll notice there's a couple of versions that I included in the packet. We're going to a new system called Invisio. And the idea is the work plans for all commissions are going to be posted on the website, so people can see status of the different projects that we're working on. So that's why the, that format looks a little different in the, in the approved plan. One of the flaws in that program is it doesn't show the parking lot. We had three items that were moved from the, from our proposal into the parking lot, those being the areas of potential change. Part of the thinking there was that's something for the Comprehensive Plan in 2028. Given the size of our work plan, they thought, put that in the parking lot. The Climate Action Plan, where we were going to look at potential conditions within the city code, maybe conditional use permits, is there something we can do? That was put in the parking lot, as well as the commercial landscaping. So the five items that we do, do have, one really. items that we do, do have, one really, and we include this just as a reminder, Planning Commission is very different from other condition, other commissions, in that really the heavy lifting are these agendas that we go through twice a month with all these land use reviews. So don't want to lose sight of that. The Cahill District Plan, finishing that up. The parking ordinance, continuation of where we're going to move next with that, that's a big one. The development review process, again, continuation from last year. Working forward with the recommendation for the city council on how we want to do development review process. And then, of course, the accessory dwelling unit issue. So five pretty big projects there. But again, thought we would tee that up for the work session. We can get into the details there a little more unless the council or commission has any comments for this evening, anything that we can prepare or with that, that, that's the end of my comments. Just for Planning Commission, yes. Yep. We do have that council work session that Commissioner Alkire mentioned with the Cahill update on February 7th. So any of the commissioners, you're all welcome to attend that.
I have a couple of things. I clicked the link to see kind of the, not the live site, but what it would look like when you log onto it. Couple of questions. When you say it'll be on the website, is this Better Together linked through the project section or is this the city website?
The city website. I don't, it's not live yet, but it will be soon.
I guess my recommendation is it's, even knowing where to find things, there's still multiple avenues to get lost. And so if we're going to have multiple, multiple avenues, we just need some redundancy. So having a link on Better Together would be smart.
And maybe a link, a link from the Planning Commission page itself.
That too. I noticed there's a color key for projects and there's one that is just called upcoming. So it means it's set to begin at a future date. So I guess my recommendation is could we put the parking lot items just on there too? Once you go to the live website, there is a color code, you know, upcoming. So it says all of, you know, all of these other ones are status pending or in progress. I would assume they will become soon or they should be activated.
Yeah, I can raise that. Because, yeah, we want to, we don't want to lose sight of those parking lot items.
I think to, I mean, I was recently contacted by a city council member about kind of jump starting discussion on one of the parking lot items in, you know, in the wake of Kevin Key's site. And I think it's good if we can show that's on there and/or we can move it or reprioritize it if, you know, if we decide there is a need to kind of shift priority. I'm sure the council would approve a revision to our work plan accordingly.
Yeah, and we could, we could advance that to the council from the commission, through that advisory communication to the council with that suggestion. So we can, we can get into that in more detail at the next work session, but that is a possibility for us, yeah.
Because following on, on the heels of our last comprehensive plan update, which was, you know, a three-year-long process, one of the things that came out of it was we focused on the small area plans. But we had a, at least an informal resolution of we shouldn't wait till that to begin an update of the small area plans because there's some, like Grandview never got completed. If there's these areas of potential change, I think it'd be better to get going on that soon versus wait five years or whatever. So that's just something maybe we can save for a discussion point during our first work session in a month or so.
Yeah, I think a big goal for us is to, because, you know, several of these items are continuations. They're big. So let's get all those done so we don't have as long a list to, to work on for next year.
My other comment is a neighbor reached out to me asking, what's up with this? They got a card in the mail about Grandview District's improvements. And there's a meeting scheduled for this Monday at 5:00 to 6:00 PM to discuss the history of it with city staff, I think, Chad Milner. And so, I mean, I'm speaking out of personal experience. I feel like I'm one of the few people that's trying to seek things out, maybe not so well, obviously. But there might be a gap that we could close on the commission of depending on where we live or the history of our involvement in certain areas while we're serving, could, could there be some sort of, you know, designated stewards of certain areas? So when there is an event like that, we're prompted on it and it's not a surprise. Because if I didn't hear about it, I would have found out about it after the fact, which seems to be a lot of some of the events that happened. So maybe a recommendation is just maybe for some future staff comments at each Planning Commission meeting, or if there's something we could do or if council could do or different departments, ones that touch land use, there could be some sort of funnel to. And we've talked about collaborating on other commissions too, and that was really nice during the comprehensive plan update. Maybe there is some of that that could happen. And maybe it's a more automated thing once, you know, some of these, all this media kind of merges together. It's not such a, a heavy lift. But yeah, I just, I was kind of waiting to see if it was going to get brought up because I, I feel like a lot of things do kind of happen in vacuums. And I think if, if we have the chance to be more proactive as a commission with places in our backyard, it 'd just be more helpful for us and kind of build in that trust. Because, I mean, I'm going to show up to that meeting, but I'd encourage anyone else who cares about that I know Lou's, at least served on the Transportation Commission. And I think a lot of the discussions on transportation type of studies and maybe where things are going. And that's the only, right, that's the only small area that has a transportation plan technically. So like I, I see there's, you know, there's ways to get our tentacles involved in a proactive way. And meetings like that just shouldn't come as a surprise. We should be like excited about them. And, you know, maybe we can help city staff too with running them or, you know, being there for additional common in history. But I don't know if anyone else has ideas about how to bridge that gap. But I feel like it's been a common one just over the years. Commissioner Miranda?
What's that specifically about? Is that, because there's two projects I know of that are, I mean, grants were, they were trying to get grants for, you know, redoing the Vernon Avenue in, in that district. And then the, you know, there's bridge work and stuff going over there. Is, is it related to those?
So it was pretty nondescript. It was basically about recent studies and projects to improve transportation operations in the district. But, you know, that will be discussed by city staff. So obviously, like, people who know me and I'm on the commission and like, yeah, I like to be ahead of that than behind it. But also excited to hear what it's about too. So any collaboration we can do with stuff that is touching our work plans, you know, with small area plans or places of potential change, maybe we can just be more proactive with, you know, the planning department and/or the engineering department about what is coming up.
Yeah, and I apologize. This is the first I'm hearing. Maybe I missed it somehow too, but--
Yeah, no. And I feel like that stuff's more, I mean, it, the word gets out there, but we have so many avenues that it gets out and it gets lost. Like, you look at the calendar for this coming week and there's hundreds of things on there. So, you know, if you go to Better Together for projects, you know, maybe there's a calendar on there that has stuff that's relevant to projects or those areas. So I think I'll have a double header that night of that meeting, then Morningside After Dark. Sounds fun. Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, I would, I would agree with you, Jimmy. An, an idea could be someone from the staff sends just an email, you know? So I know we could go on, go on these sites ourselves, but if we get like an email saying, hey, by the way, like, we can advance this, this, this event that's coming up that might interest you guys, go here for more information, you know? So then be like, oh, okay. Now it's like, it's bringing information to me, which is great. So then I could say, oh, okay, great. Here's these things that are happening. And I could then go chase it down, you know? So that might be an idea. One other comment too on the work plan. So I read through our work plan and I skimmed the other work plans. And there's some work that's happening in other commissions that I think it might be good for us to be involved with. There's some like cross-project type things, like transportation, I think, has something to do with parking. I think there's a, something out there that's, I think, any transportation commission's work plan that impacts the planning commission. And even like what we did tonight, you know, looking at the ordinance for multifamily housing, you know, if one of us were in the loop on that and during our comment section, just, just comment and say, hey, by the way, guys, we're working on this thing. Here's what we're looking at. Here's the rough level of frameworks. And then our brains are like, okay, kind of warming up to it. So when the ordinance does drop and we have to review it and, and comment on it, we already have some kind of background and could lean into it a little bit easier and have some more processed thoughts, right? So I think there's some opportunity here, I think, where we could collaborate more with other commissions on stuff for the city. You know, we're all working on the same goal. So there might be some cross-referencing, I think, that we could explore here and, and be more collaborative about.
Thanks. Any, any other comments by commissioners? All right. Thank you. How about we move to the last order of business?
Motion to adjourn?
Yeah, that one. I welcome a motion.
That was a motion.
Oh, that was a motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So moved. Meeting is adjourned. Woo! Yeah, there we go.